Going board hearing, and this is, this is a hearing that's, the public hearing actually, the public aspect has been closed. We're now into the decision phases of Brookview in Milford, which originally came in as Rob Sham Village. So with that, we have gone through a lengthy process since, I believe, December. I think some of the board members may still have some questions tonight as we, as we start sifting through some of the findings. We were sifting through some of the reports. I think the first thing that we should probably address as a board would be the aspect if anybody here wants to have a total denial on the project, and if they do, I'd take a motion for a total denial, because that way there, we won't need to proceed any further. Not hearing that, I will continue on with the hearing, and we'll start to talk about the procedures.
Mr. Chairman, I can interrupt. Remember, we spoke earlier, Attorney Bobrovsky wants just-
Oh, yes. I believe you indicated that Attorney Bobrovsky would like to say, have a few comments before we get moving.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. Mark Bobrovsky from Contra for the record. I certainly don't have anything to say in advance. I'd like to see what happens, and then I deserve my right to comment before you take a formal vote.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Not a problem. Okay, as you, as most of you are aware, and the board members are aware, we've tried to get through some work sessions on a number of issues that come up with substantial-sized projects like this one. In the decision aspect, I'd ask each board member to check and go through, and has been going through some of these opportunities. Of course, Town Council Jerry Moody, a former Town Council Jerry Moody-
Corey, I'm your 40B coordinator.
Is now the, he's now council for the 40B, 40B coordinator. He's the coordinator. All right, we'll call him coordinator.
Can you cancel your malpractice?
Yeah, I never carry it. I don't malpractice, so I don't need it.
Jerry's input, Jerry's input's been instrumental, I think, in supplying the board, and in general, the public with some basic overviews of the rights of the development team, as well as the rights of the ZBA and the community at large. It just so happens that this will be the first of three of them to come in front of us over the next few months. So I'm going to start with just the procedural history. Please take a look at the procedural history on this. Basically, it's the introduction to what I'm, what I'm considering a conditional approval, or a, an aspect of a condition of an approval. The eligibility, however, they, of course, have gone through and passed through the mass housing concept from August 15th, and then in November 27th, they submitted a comprehensive permit to the ZBA. And then we started conducting hearings on December 6th. And then again, we held them on January 17th, February 21st, March 28th, April 25th, and May 30th. On May 30th, we did close the public hearing, and then at that point, we started to work, providing a working copy on some form of documentation from a permitting standpoint. In here, in your package, you'll also find, have an indication of the applicant's findings, the town of Milford statutory requirement under the general-
Mr. Chairman, let me just interject for one minute on the findings, which you see, which are fairly generic, would apply to the basic approval of this with conditions as are in here. Additionally, if you come up with additional conditions as a board in areas that may, would require different findings, but that'll be, once you decide whatever those other conditions may be, then we may have to adjust the findings that support those conditions. So this is generic, which may be enough if we weren't going to have any other extraordinary conditions, but if you're going to have any other significantly different conditions, the findings will differ, that will ultimately put together. So this is, you know, not final by any stretch.
Correct. Okay. And also, please note that this particular project does incorporate the entire site. Some of us may know this is a portion of the casino location. Currently, the project is going to have, that was submitted, is going to have two five-story multifamily residential structures, and the request is 150 units per dwelling, with 5% studios, 40% one-bedrooms, 45% two-bedrooms, and 10% three-bedrooms. We have certainly retained the aspects of the Boston Consultant Group and also consulting engineers that came on board to help us through this whole process as well. Other aspects of the project and the departments of the town officials also included the town plan, the fire department, police department, conservation commission, which is certainly going to have a big impact on this particular project and other projects, the school department, board of health, the highway severe town engineer sewer department, board of assessors. And I believe that should have completed all the departments, and of course, our mentor over here, Mr. Moody. So as we get into item seven, let me kind of, there's some language indications in here that some may feel is considered the word adequate, and I may feel that it's not adequate, but it's a general term being used within the process of the, of the aspects of the decision. For instance, the plan set included wetland and flood-impact areas were adequately delineated. But some of the plans did not adequately delineate some of the test hole pistons and the pipings in the ground. Those are some of the things that we're considering as a general overview of what, what has been supplied to us. We're not going to be able to get the building, the building aspect and the architectural's perfect. That is, that is something that comes in at a later date in time. So as we go through the, the items, I'm on page, well, I'm on page three of my old copy. I'm going to go with the new copy. Three, two. All right, so it's page three of the new one. As you can see, it outlines some of the ZBA's consultant work by traffic engineers, town engineers. There's been an awful lot of modifications to the site plan. There's been an awful lot of modifications concerning access to and safety aspects. The developer has, has been cooperative in many aspects. Now it takes us down to some of the aspects that the board members would like to ask questions on within the document, and that's when we start getting into the decision and the regulatory conditions. So as we go through, I know I have a question on a couple of these conditions, and one of them, let's, we'll start with the first one. They're looking for a number of dwelling units that may be constructed at the premise that shall be limited of 300 dwelling units. I know there's been talk going back and forth that it's pretty massive. Board members have a, is that okay with board members, or would someone like to make a rec, a different recommendation?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, I still have some grave concerns over certain items. Still mainly, one of my main concerns basically is, is traffic. I feel that both police and fire will be greatly strained. When you talk about sewage, I think that the sewage issue will be quite more difficult than anticipated, you know, basically due to the makeup of the land, which is ledge and also wetlands. At this time, in the recent memo that we received from the water company, was that now, after improvements are made, there's going to be plenty of water. Already, numbers indicate 600,000 additional gallons per day available to town residents, but no real explanation how that's going to come about, other than the numbers themselves. And of course, this comes on the heels of the water company just issuing stage-two water ban to the residents of Milford. Therefore, I would move at this time as a condition for no more than 250 units in this development.
We have a motion by John to provide, to take the dwelling units from 300 units down to 250. Do I have a second on that?
Second?
I have a second for discussion. I've got to, I've got to say something, because I'm not going to live with myself if I don't say something. You know, the biggest aspect of this entire site that I have been asking for and requesting has been a multitude of aspects. Because of the challenges of the site, the safety aspects was a major concern. Our own town engineer had to address that issue before we could get the development group to try and move forward with that. The existing aspects of wetlands, ledge, and having a massive onsite sewer disposal system that we don't have any knowledge about, but we've been told that it's got to be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection, and that it's under their control, is a concern for me. The water situation blew me away. When they're telling the residents of this community, this is the water company, that they couldn't guarantee anything after 2027, 2027, that was disturbing to me. So based on those type of situations, this board's requirement and job as ZBA members is to protect the community and protect the public and protect the aspects of our services concerning water and sewer. This particular development could have done sewer down the street. Whether or not that was more expensive or not, I don't know, but from a, from a site perspective, I believe that dropping down to 250 units is not going to be something that this particular group cannot live without, especially on what the impacts of this site is going to do. So I will, I will put my, my name on that one there as supporting wholeheartedly the 50-unit reduction. Anybody else?
I agree.
Mike? Charlie, you have anything?
No.
I disagree, but that's okay.
Mike? I'm set. Would you like to comment?
Thanks for the opportunity, opportunity to comment, Mr. Chairman. We had this discussion at a meeting a month or two ago, and I just want to reiterate it so that we all understand what the stakes are. The benchmark right now is back under 3%. The treasury note is 2.9% today, and there's 450 basis points added to that for uneconomic. That's another 4.5%. So that computes out to 7.4%. That's what HAC defines an economic rental project at today, 7.4%. By Stephen's reckoning, he's at about 5.9%. Now, you might say-
Under 300 units, fine.
With 300 units, it's 5.9%. So you might say, why would you apply when you're a point and a half under what's deemed economic? And there are a variety of reasons. You can make it work over a longer time, and you still get your money taken out of it. And so if a developer chooses to go forward at a lower rate, in this case, 5.9%, that becomes his new benchmark. When you cut 50 units out of it, I just want you to understand the consequences. It's not a small impact. It's, it's an impact that will take the, his, his personal benchmark from about 5.9% down to about 5.6%. So that's 30 basis points. That's a lot of money, and you're, you're going to have to show HAC, if you're, if you are to prevail in that reduction, that the need for the housing is outweighed by your local concerns. And that's a very difficult battle to wage at Housing Appeals Committee, having done this many times on behalf of communities, in fact, far more times on behalf of communities than I have on behalf of developers. I just want you to understand the stakes. We'll certainly, if there's no reconsideration of that, sharpen our pencil and see whether or not that works, but that in and of itself is likely to result in an appeal to Housing Appeals Committee. Just, and I'm not, we've had a very considerate and professional relationship. I'm a straight shooter. I just want you to know where we're coming from, so you're not surprised. Had this conversation with your counsel already, and he knows that that's, that would likely be our position.
I understand that, and I've been involved in some of those discussions, and frankly, you indicated you would, you would think about sharpening your pencil, but you never did, so-
Well, we did. We went through the exercise.
I never got notified that you went through the exercise, with the exception of that you're not dropping a single dime. I'm more concerned about the overall impact of the site and what it does to the aspect of the community, along with the water, the sewer, and the, you know, the challenges of the site. I am certainly not against any development whatsoever. As a matter of fact, based on what has been submitted, I support it. I support it with 250 units. If there's not any more discussion, Mr. Chairman?
The safety factor is what I'm hung up on. I visit people down in that area. I have a listing down in that area. I tried to pull out of the driveway yesterday, Sunday, and, and the traffic, it's unbelievable. It's, it's, I almost got sideswiped coming out, because it's around Dan's Autobody, which is maybe 300 yards from the site. And I know you've done studies, and I know you've put numbers down and computed them, but the reality, and maybe nobody wants to look at the reality, is that's a very dangerous situation out there. And I just wish that that aspect would be looked at a little bit more in depth when you folks are making a decision on whether or not to proceed with the 250 or not.
And I'm going to say this, and, you know, when the traffic study came in, a lot of board members felt that it wasn't accurate, but what I felt wasn't accurate was the amount of cars that were going to leave and, leave there in the morning. I just felt that, that most of these units, they're so far away from the core of our community, most people have two cars. So if 100 people go to work in the morning, you've got 200 cars coming out of that site. Well, if you take 50 units off of that, you just saved yourself from 100 cars and a safety aspect coming out of the site. I'm looking at it from that point as well. You know, we can beat this until we are blue in the face. It probably is not going to matter on this particular aspect of it and this particular condition of it. They have the right to appeal it. Let me just advise board members of their right to appeal it. First of all, they don't need the planning board, or they don't need other, other departments besides the conservation to come in and get this approval. They can certainly appeal any decision that we have within our findings here, and if they win, then they get what they want, no matter what. So please understand that if they start the appeal, it stops the clock ticking. The day we file this to the town clerk's office, they have two years. As soon as they file an appeal, they start saving some time. So please understand that, too, in our decisions tonight, irregardless of whether it's 500 units, 400 units, 250 units, or 100 units. The applicant does have the right to appeal. He may appeal it even if we didn't have, even if one of these conditions he didn't care for, he could appeal it. So if that's what they choose to do, that is their prerogative. My only concern is for the actual aspects of safety and the aspects of this site, and that's all I am going on, is the aspects of safety. And by reducing that amount of units, along with the challenges that the site has, as I mentioned earlier, and it still remains to be seen how they're going to fit the septic system on here that, you know, we clearly don't have any knowledge for. They clearly could have tied into sewer, it looks like, too, but I think that would have been too costly compared to the septic system. In any event, I think we've probably banged the stuff out of the 250. Is there any other comments on the 250?
I have one. Based on if this, if everybody agrees to the reduction of 50 units, is it going to be proportionate from studio to bedroom?
Yes. Yeah, it'd be proportionate.
It's not going to be all of a sudden, we're going to get rid of 50 units, we're going to have more three bedrooms.
We'll make a proportion.
Keep the same proportions that are in there, but you probably do-
Same proportions. So you're not going to end up with more three bedrooms?
No.
Okay.
There'll be 10%. Just wanted that clarified.
It'll stay the same.
All right. With that, there's a motion for, to go from 300 to 250 units, and there's a second. All those in favor, by signify by raising your hand. Opposed? I didn't see yours. I didn't see any.
I'm in favor.
You're in favor? Okay, so you got, you got four in favor, one opposed? Is that correct? Is that what you counted?
I didn't count.
One more time.
I didn't know I was supposed to count.
One, two, three, four in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Okay. So four in favor, one opposed on the 250.
On that narrow issue, yeah, not on the whole.
Not on that narrow. All right, section two. I'm going to go through it page by page. Does anybody have anything on page three left? I'll go to page. We'll go to page five.
Mr. Chairman, I can help you out just to move so you don't go out and bite them here. I mean, these are, you've seen these in virtually every version you've received. These are relatively standard regulatory conditions. Some are in there very favorable to the town. I don't know that you need to go through each one. I mean, they're not, they're not so much project-specific as they are incorporating the-
General conditions.
Regulations, the statute, and making sure they're reflected in here. So again, I, you know, there's the ones that, you know, you might bring your attention, it's like number 17, dealing with preferences, but you've actually discussed that, and those preferences were changed based on your discussions.
Right. And those preferences, by the way, which is allowed under, under the 40B regulations, with respect to at least 70% of the affordable units, the applicant shall provide a preference category for Milford residences follows, and it's not in so, such a particular order of identity, residents of Milford, parents and children of the residents of Milford, veterans, employees of the town. So, you know, we've tried to focus some of those aspects as the town, town first. Let's talk about a couple of things. Let me see, 14, I think I didn't, I think I was okay with that. Jerry, talk to me about 16 concerning the monitorization. Give me a brief overview about the, the monitorization aspect.
Well, this one, it provides, either the, the previous paragraphs, 11 to 15-
Right.
Won't be construed in accordance with that particular case or any other relevant decisions to limit the town's authority to enforce the provisions of the comprehensive permit. So you've got full ability under the law, once you issue a comprehensive permit here, presuming reduced to 250, once it goes through any appeals and it's final, nothing in here is going to be construed as limiting your authority to enforce it going forward. Obviously, there can be enforcement issues as it's constructed and as it's operating.
Correct.
So that's basically all that's provided. And plus, there's a, you know, if there's a problem, then, and a number of provisions in here provide for further fees that may have to be paid based upon enforcement, based upon other issues. So that's consistent with other provisions.
Okay. Page seven, I didn't see anything that we didn't already work through before on page seven. Page eight, basically the same, the same condition. By the way, I want to, and I meant to ask Mike Dean this, and correct me if I'm redundant in asking this question, concerning the EPA and DEP stormwater requirement and the septic standards. Does the MS4 program kick into that as well?
The MS4 program?
The MS4, where-
It's all part and parcel of the whole stormwater management.
Part, part of the whole stormwater management.
And this is as tight as you can possibly get.
Right.
I mean, they're required to comply with EPA and DEP stormwater requirements in all respects, so that's-
And I figured that the MS4 was part of that. I just wanted to-
Of course, they've agreed, they've agreed, and it's reflected in the waivers in the back, that we're not waiving the town's stormwater bylaw in this regard either. So we've got all the authority we need, and, and along with the state and federal agencies to enforce stormwater management.
And number three on page eight, we talked about the time of operations, Monday through Friday. Seven o'clock a comfortable timeframe for, for ending, or, I mean, we've got a Monday through Friday timeframe, not starting before seven, and not after 7:00 PM Monday through Friday. I believe that's what we talked about?
This is what they proposed, so it's, and you, as you just talked about it, everybody thought it was pretty reasonable.
Okay. All right, that's great. Apologies are in there, that's fine. Let's go to page nine. Anybody have any questions on page nine?
Nope.
The project excited, and I don't know if I asked this question, so I'm going to ask it.
Before we do, there's very, the two very important ones on page nine, just so you're aware, I mean, we discussed them, but number seven is extraordinarily important. No foundation or building permit to be issued until the applicant has demonstrated that the Milford Water Company or successor entity, which is, if the town ever takes it over, will provide sufficient water supply for domestic use and suppression. This is, in any of these three pending applications, that provision is going to be in there, and that's a key provision, if not the key provision. Unit reduction or not, if the water supply isn't there and the water company won't do it, then these aren't going to get built. Similar, other provisions in here, including number nine, dealing with the wastewater infrastructure, it's all going to be done before there's any occupancy permits issued. So they've got to go through the whole DEP process and get this onsite sewage system approved, which is no easy thing, but before there's going to be any occupancy on these, these buildings, that has to be done, be tested, and be completed, and be certified. So those provisions are in here. We've got that nailed down very, very well, I think.
Okay, and we've covered any other peer review aspects concerning that. My, my only thing that I had not seen here, copies of construction documents, whether there be the ASBILTS for the sewer, the ASBILTS for the site, the building plan, and more specifically, the, the floor plans. Is there a way the, the town can get copies of, in paper and CD?
Oh, I'm sure that's not a problem.
That that would not be a problem?
There's provisions in here about final plans and whatnot, but we can certainly, you know, put something in there.
Just, you know, because technology, yeah, technology changes, and if it becomes electronic, or to rather get it electronically.
We can, we'll make those adjustments.
Okay.
Excuse me, David. Is number eight, Jerry, when I spoke previously about regarding a beacon or a light there, with the approval, the project shall be subject to review and approval of mass DOT with the applicant to return for waivers as decided as necessary?
Yeah, that's just, that's an overall provision, that obviously, that any work that's going to be done in the state layout is going to be subject to mass DOT. But it's not specific to the be, the light, but again, I think the applicant, if we put another, if there's nothing in here now, and it doesn't show on the plan of record, then we can put a provision in saying that they shall establish, subject to DOT approval, flashing beacon at the particular location.
Okay, well, I know it's not on the plan, so it's-
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I-
I think Steve said it was on the plan.
It's not on the plan.
On the plan, so I think there has to be some, I don't know, would it put that here or?
It'll, you'd say, if you say that you want it, we will put it in.
Okay.
Anything else on that night, that item? Okay. I covered the plan process of that. Don't see anything here. We've talked about the permit process. Let's cover the aspect, and we did talk about this, but I'd like to, the conservation board is going to be, is going to actually have the control aspect of the site itself. From an occupancy standpoint, they may activate their occupancy permits at certain levels of construction, not necessarily a complete building, providing that they can do it correctively and, and of course, with, with the safety aspects of that. There's a clause within the agreement that stipulates that there's no bond that needs to be issued until they actually start their aspects of that. I think the conservation has a process in place, and, you know, as far as the occupancy timeframe, if, you know, grass hasn't germinated, or certain aspects of the final binder is not done, those will be picked up, and I'm sure that the conservation board will have items concerning that particular format.
Your item number 20 covers that, and a few of the other ones do, too. Covers a possible bonding situation.
Correct. Correct. That's why I didn't want to get into detail with it.
It's winter, it's not going to be finished until spring, then they can occupy by putting up a bond to guarantee that these items, whatever they may be, will be completed.
Item 12, page 12. Any questions on anything in particular on page 12? I'm assuming under 26. We have certain items, one, two, three, and four. It has to deal with pesticides or herbicides. There's no, I'm sure there's no questions concerning that. I thought road salt, road salt in the vehicle parking areas was something that was interesting to put in. Again, everything's referring to the plan of record. The project won't be gated. All grading and aspects will be consistent with the plan. I've addressed the ASBILTS stuff. Let me, let me kind of ask a question. I want to ask a question only because it has to do with fire and safety. In the event the fire or police department need to have a training exercise, is that something that is possible within the process of the site? Whether they need to practice on ladders, or fire emergencies, or, you know, police getting comfortable with the building, I think that's something that is important.
I think there's provision in here that requires some final review by police and fire, and obviously, if the fire chief wants to go up and-
They're going to be in the building on inspection samples.
Yeah, and, and they've been over this fairly well, a lot, as you know. But if they want to go up there and, and test their ladders and see if the reach is there, I, I'd be surprised if the developer would not say, yeah. I'd be surprised if the developer would not say yes, I mean, I just, you know, and the same with the police, I mean, if the police want to monitor anything like that, or do planning, I can't imagine a circumstance where any developer wouldn't allow that, never mind this one.
Okay, we're on page thirteen, any issues concerning thirteen? It covers just about everything we need to cover.
It's pretty comprehensive, and again, Attorney Bobrovsky did a great job putting this together with me in a lot of respects, and it really did put a lot of protections in there for the town, so it's comprehensive.
We, we talked about, in the event water becomes fruitful, any irrigation on the site, anything that has to do with site irrigation should be done by well, and not by, not by any type of public water, we talked about that. It says, the irrigation system installed utilizes Milford Water Company, that's not what we talked about, Jerry.
Where are you, Dave?
Forty-two, page fourteen.
If, it says if, because as you know, from your Dave Contry, they simply don't allow it, not for me, not for you, not for-
Right, so-
It's not allowed, but if they do allow it, is what they're saying here, now, they don't, but if they do allow it, then these are the conditions that are put on it, only the folk-
I just prefer if we just put irrigation, irrigation, field irrigation, site irrigation by well.
There is another provision, Mr. Chairman, it's twenty-eight on page nineteen.
Nineteen?
Oh, you may be looking at, Mark, you may be looking at different versions here, twenty-eight on which page?
It's twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
On nineteen.
Nineteen, page nineteen, yep.
Yeah, that's, that one came in last time we talked about.
Right.
Yeah.
Huh, that's, and do we need forty-two?
Um, probably superfluous, we'll take a look at it then.
I think it opens it up to have an irrigation, say, somewhere.
Doesn't it open it up, it's just, only if the water company wants to allow it, and they are not-
And they get paid for it.
They are not going to allow it.
What happens if in fifty years, you go in the MWRA, and now you can have the flood?
Well, in fifty years-
I'll be dead.
But it'll, it'll be hopefully-
Long be told.
It's a good point, no, it's, it's a good point.
Xenophobic doesn't work.
But if you've got irrigation wells running, why would you want to go that route?
I don't want irrigation wells running, I'm just going to use the tertiary treatment.
Well, then, if you want to leave it in there, I have no problem with it, fifty years from now, we end up with the MW, that's not a bad thing.
Twenty-eight, well, twenty-eight basically controls over forty-two, but let me take a look at that, as-
I, I have no problem with it, if, if, you know, bringing up what he, he brought up a good point, you know, we don't know what's going to happen fifty years from now. I know I won't be here, neither will you, and neither will you.
I have nothing to worry about, I don't like to go down yet.
Jerry will still be around.
I'll still be here, I'll be, semi, still semi-retired, I guess.
Yeah, we, we went through this aspect on fourteen with showerheads and toilets, and, you know, to a point where it's overkill. Construction barriers, physical barriers, you know, we've talked about all the erosion controls, the disturbed areas, that's all standard. I'm on page fifteen at this point. Most of these are all language that I've clearly seen before, and have, have been involved with before, so it's nothing out of the ordinary, or not, something that's not standard. Again, you know, this, it starts with the certi bonding aspect, so if you want to take a quick look at number thirteen on page sixteen, I'm just trying to get the board members comfortable with what this developer would have to do, in the event he starts to go through that process, he's going to have to certainly post a bond at some point, if need be. What I'd like to see, if it's possible, Jerry, on fifteen, prior to starting any authorized activity, if we can share the affiliation aspects of the contractors, that will be, of course, involved within the construction of the site, whether it be supervisor, whether it be trade, plumbing trades, electrical trades, or who's going to be controlling there on site, that we have availability, or the department has, department heads have availability to cell phones and email, in case someone has to get to someone, whether it be the building inspector, the plumbing inspector, the gas inspector, the town planner, so, when it says, you know, name and address, telephone numbers, you know, let's get into the cell numbers and the email, that's all, that's all it was. Seventeen, again, a lot of it's standard language, are you familiar with it? Nothing, nothing surprising. Twenty-eight again, that both attorneys mentioned concerning the wells, irrigation, permits, the construction aspect, final site conditions, all of that is the language that is consistently used, and some of it's been modified. On twenty, number two, are we sure that we've got the right acreage now?
One sixteen, plus or minus?
Yep.
Yeah, and that, and that special condition, number two, is important, that it's for the entire one hundred and sixteen acres, so there's no coming back five years from now and having a new, you know, increased amount, so it's for the entire acreage.
You can't, Mr. Chairman, to be precise, we're still in the middle of tying down the altar survey, so I can't tell you the inch.
But it's in that range.
It's one hundred and sixteen and change.
And again, it's, it is with exception if he wants to do some passive recreation, yep, it's a wonderful thing, if he decides that he'd like to do some solar as well, so clearly that would be a benefit.
And as you see in lapse, that's standard, that's in accordance with the, the regulations, it's actually three years from the date it takes final effect, either if there's no appeal, when we file it in the town clerk and there's no appeal, or if there's an appeal, when that's finally resolved, it's a three year that it's in effect. You know, which can be important, if, if there's never a water supply developed, developed and made available within, you know, the next three-plus years, then there, you know, there's always possibility of an extension on it, but it gets more remote as time goes by, if water isn't resolved. But again, as you know from prior discussions, that there's an effort, ongoing effort, cooperation to try to resolve those problems, not only for the benefit of these developments, I'm using all three of them generically, but then providing additional new water for the citizens through improvements to the Phil Street Wells, but if those don't take place, there'll be no construction. So that, that's in there, it's very important. The waivers are in here, as you know, as we discussed, the necessary waivers from the zoning bylaw will be in there, the necessary waivers from the wetlands bylaw will be in there-
Right.
But not from the town's occupancy bylaw, not from the stormwater management bylaw, not from the general bylaw provision dealing with the street, so they agreed to exclude that, and they're not part of this, so it's down to them.
Yeah, let me ask you a question concerning the occupancy bylaw. We currently have in place, border health comes in, and they actually-
It's going to be fully applicable to this project, because everything else is down.
That's going to be fully applicable as well to this one. Is there any questions concerning that from board members? We're clear on that one? Okay, let's go to twenty on number three. So, we have identified that, that even though we've moved the entrance one hundred and sixty-four feet, plus or minus, south of the site, the Whispering Pine aspect is still going to be impacted, so we have, we've worked and, and came up with the aspect of a right turn only coming out of Whispering Pine, and that will, that will occur around the certificate of occupancy timeframe, that that will be completed. We do not have detailed plans on that, so, just, it's, it's actually referencing an exhibit, I'd like to see if we can get as close as possible a plan on that.
I think we have a sketch that we can, we can-
We can, we can reference.
We can reference the sketch, and obviously, that's still, the final plans have to be worked out-
Right.
With the highway department, with the state.
So you want to, we'll just make that like an exhibit A.
Yeah, which, which provision I'm actually looking for?
Uh, this is on twenty, page twenty, number three.
Very top. Okay, yeah.
That's this plan that was prepared.
That's, yeah, that's, we already have that in there.
Right, exactly, exactly, yes.
It's, it's going to be an exhibit to the, to the permit itself, yeah, so we're all set.
We can name it Exhibit A if you like.
That's D, so we better get it A.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On number four-
What page are you on?
On page twenty.
Number four.
On the new document, let's see, our final plans shall, shall show a median.
Right.
At a previous meeting, I had mentioned that, that the town engineer-
That's correct.
Had recommended a median length, length of the drive, now that's assumed, been eliminated.
It's in there.
Yeah, this is, that's, that was-
No, that says at the entrance.
That is at the entrance, not the full driveway.
Not the full driveway.
Not the full driveway.
I understand that.
Oh, yeah, okay. And, and I believe in our discussions, and I want to be clear that you're comfortable with what was discussed at that, that work session, that there were some issues with the New Woodlands School from a turning radius standpoint-
Bad problem.
And we had, it had to be removed.
Had to remove the median and just do a painted median, because it just prevented the, but, prevented school buses from getting into the elementary school, and delivery trucks and everything else, because there was a raised median, and it just didn't work. So to have, you'd want a median here that if it's going to be raised in any way, it's certainly want to have drive over curving, if I'm using the right phrase.
Mountable.
What is it, mountable?
Mountable.
Forgot the phrase, very good, mountable curving, if that's, but, there'll be a median, but that means probably a widening of the interest to some extent, in both, in both sides, inevitably, but that's why we've got to see the final design later, but, you know, this is enough to make sure that that's going to be in the final plans that you're seeing there.
Page one off. Jerry, good question, back to this lapse, number one. I thought it was, any copy of the permit granted should lapse two years.
Three, three, three.
Thank you.
A lot of things in, in the field of zoning lapse in two years, this one happens to be three years. And again-
Is that state mandated, or is this here?
That's part of the existing regulations, and, and again, don't be thinking, wait out three years and it goes away, I mean, they, there's a power in the, in the Commonwealth that grant extensions, but only up to a point.
I was always hearing too, but-
Yeah, you can always get extensions, yeah. We had, we had, on number six, just so that we're clear, as far as the board's concerned, and I believe they've already, they've already worked it out, under six, the fire department, we have corrected that issue with the, with the truck, correct?
Yes.
We're pretty, we're, because I, I know that became a last minute, just on a curve.
Chief indicated he was comfortable with it, and this will give him a final review on it, you know, as we go along.
Okay.
And then, number five, we have that enlargement to that parking area-
Right.
By four spaces.
By four spaces, which is the, the bus stop area. One, one of them, can't remember which one it was. I just, speaking of that, I want to go back to it real quick. There was some language, I can't put my hand on it right this minute, there was some language concerning notification of the schools?
Yeah, there was some language in here dealing with, sorry, I mean, I can't find it real quickly, but requiring, I'm looking at page eleven, number twenty-five, both requested, the applicant provide the school superintendent, the ZBA, and the board of slack, and the estimate of number of school-aged children.
Right, just, I, I would just make it automatic that they notify us so that we know.
Yeah, well, that's, well, yeah.
I mean, it's going to take a year or two anyways, before we can get that information because of the, the construction aspect of the build.
Yep.
Twenty, I think we're okay there. And then, of course, the waivers that were in the back that we just discussed-
We talked about those, right?
You'll notice in your, you'll notice also that the Exhibit A list, which just references some of the communications back and forth-
Just puts in the record, which is very important, particularly if there's going to be an appeal, so the HAC, we, we've all know what documents we're going to be introducing, what we dealt with, so there, I think everything that you received over the time that this has begun is listed in here, including, very importantly, the, what'll be, the plan of record, which will be the last set of plans, as opposed to the original plans. So, yeah, that's why that's in there, and of course, the waivers.
All right, and I want to address, I want to address Bob's, Bob's aspect, and I'd like, since everybody's here now, Bob had had some concerns about a second form of It's, it's nice to see how quickly this can, look, it turned around, I don't know when the request went in, Bob, to Jerry.
It went in Sunday night, and I got it back yesterday, so-
So, this was impressive to see this thing turned around so quickly, and the challenges, basically, Bob had requested to find out, to see if we could have a second form of egress out of the site versus one, one entrance and exit off of, off of East Main Street. They tried to locate an area to tie it into Wildwood Road, it looks like, as an emergency form of egress, or a regular egress, and we ended up with some issues. So Bob, why don't you go ahead and, and discuss with us what you proposed?
I guess my, yeah, I guess my concern was, once again, the, the amount of cars coming out of there in the time of an evacuation or emergency, I, you see on the news, it's never going to happen to us, but there's a bomb scare. Do you have to evacuate, do you have to get fifty feet away from the building, do you have to get a hundred feet away from the building, do you have to take in all the cars and get in, and take them out to Route sixteen, and whatever, can that single road, my question was, can it handle five, six hundred cars at once going out? I know in, in the existing office, I mean, apartment buildings, we have Oak Ridge and the Groves, Roland Green and Sherwood, there's, albeit they were built a long time ago, it's probably not even this in mind, but it just so happens that there's a bunch of ways to go in and out of there, whether they were planned that way, or just happened to be that way. So, my concern, once again, with, with the safety aspect, and not having anybody get hurt in any form, shape, or manner, is, is, you know, the possibility of a, not so much a second means of egress, but an emergency exit, a gated one, that should you need that, it's, it's there.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant a bit, let me just kind of signify what was put on the plan. It indicates that significant grading issues with roadway slope at ten percent, wetland crossing would need to be at elevation of three twenty-seven, the existing elevation is three twelve, resulting in a fifteen-foot tall retaining wall, and that looks like it's as soon as you come off the site, so you have more replication, how many square feet of replication is this?
Excuse me, what was the question?
How many square feet of more replication would this be, roughly?
Well, the, the minimum required is a one-to-one ratio.
Yeah.
So, so what this sketch shows here is the emergency access only, so that's a twenty-foot wide, you know, we did put a one A where it would be at the thirty-foot wide, in case that's what somebody was looking for, we understood it to be emergency, so that's why the sketch is based on that, we didn't have time to put another full sketch together for, for, you know, daily vehicular access, but, you know, twenty-foot wide is the state building code for fire access, so that's why we went with a twenty-foot wide access for only, and the issue really is, is the, the grade up at the parking lot, the building side area, is dictated by the grades that have been established for the first floor of the building, so as you come down from the first floor of the building, we're at about three thirty-six, where the roadway would want to tie in, you've got to have a little bit of a leveling area so any type of emergency vehicle doesn't bottom out in that area, and then we came down as steep as we could, and by the time you get down to the wetland, you're at about three twenty-seven as a proposed grade, the existing grade that goes through there is at about three twelve, three thirteen in that area, so that entire length coming down from the parking lot down through the wetland area, you have to have retaining walls in there to make up the slopes, and through the retaining wall, otherwise you keep offgrading into the wetlands, and that three thousand square feet of weapon disturbance would go through the roof, like, you know, over ten thousand square feet if you were, you know, offgrading and not using retaining walls. So this, this bridge that we'd be crossing, the wetland, would be as much as fifteen feet higher than the wetland elevation coming through there, and then there is a second wetland crossing, Brayad-
I see that.
At the end of Wildwood. Now, the backside of that, the side closest to Wildwood, that's an approximation, we never flagged the backside.
You don't have an altar survey to even see that.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's an approximation, but based on GIS information, that's about where the wetland is, so you can see the, the left-hand side of the wetlands there, you know, there are wet- you know, there are wetland flags, fifty-nine, fifty-eight, fifty-seven, fifty-six, so that was delineated and surveyed, so that side's fixed, the backside's a little bit up in the air, but based on, again, on GIS, we feel like it's, it's an approximation of that, that area, and that's the smaller of the two wetland crossings anyway. And then, everything grades down towards that wetland crossing, you know, the entire roadway would grade down to that, so you'll be just.
So that grade, that grade from the site, as you, as you carry down and you're heading into the proposed road and then ending up into Wildwood, that's sloping down towards the, towards Wildwood Road.
Correct, to the wetland.
So that's all, that's just all, that's gonna be a river of water then, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, then that's why we showed a conceptual basin down there, you'd have to collect that water and, and, you know, treat it, you know, slow down the peak thro- flows before you discharged it to the adjacent wetland, so it would result in a fairly significant amount of claret right at the end of Wildwood Road, which, you know, there are a couple of houses that are right at the end of Wildwood Road, so it would have an impact on those, on those waters.
And are you positive that you have control of that ground right up into that roadway?
I, you know, I don't, I'm not even sure we do, but the right-of-way of Wildwood, based on the plans we've seen, does go to the middle of our park. I haven't done any title research on that to verify that, but, you know, the request came in, it reached me, I think, yesterday, so we just tried to look at it from an engineering concept of, you know, what would it take to get it in there, and obviously, this is a very costly design.
How many square feet you think of wetlands need to be replicated there?
At a one-to-one replication, it's three thousand square feet.
For both areas?
For both, the total, but twenty-foot wide, with a really narrow retaining wall, and, you know, using the retaining wall as, as almost a parapet wall, that you could then put a guideline on, three thousand is the minimum.
I'm not an engineer, don't wanna be, but this sketch here just comes off a little bit closer to the entrance and veers off, and by this, the grade doesn't look too bad, and I don't know, Mike just crossed the wetland up by, up by Wildwood, so.
So, so, where are you saying, you say bring the roadway into the, to the driveway access?
Yeah. It doesn't have to come off of the, the parking lot, it come off of the roadway, it can be gated here, okay, come through here, which, I don't think there's any wetlands here, the slope seems to be not too bad, and come in that way.
But then you don't have a true duplication, because you, I think with the permits that you were asking.
It gets you probably seventy percent of what you're looking for, it doesn't get you the whole duplication.
No, but seventy's better than forty.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I, I think there's, we appreciate the concern, and I would offer the following. First of all, your, your transportation experts agree with us, our transportation experts, that what we were doing as far as the front entrance area was, worked well. We're very concerned about the conservation, does this work?
Yeah, it's for the television.
I don't, okay.
It's for the TV.
So, to go backwards a little bit, we think from a transportation standpoint, we think what we, the original design was effective. We think the Conservation Commission is gonna have a problem with this, because we're doing a limited project, I come in with one entrance, they now show two, and I'm not so sure they're gonna be very pleased about that. We haven't heard anything from your life safety.
We hadn't heard anything from your life safety professionals that questioned what our original design was. This exposes the homes on Wildwood to a significant level of disturbance that we originally were trying to buffer ourselves from. They had several, several stands of trees that were standing between us and them, and now they're, they're right, were right in their face, so we don't think that that's necessarily gonna be of great, well-received. I know that we had people on, across the way from us who showed up about transportation issues, I think if they knew about this, they would be in uproar. It is a significant wetland impact, no matter how you slice and dice it, there's a vernal pool there, I don't know if it shows on that, but we tried to stay away from it, so there's, there's that. This is, as Daniel said a moment ago, this is a very significant cost, we see this having a very significant ding on our, on our return on, a measurable return on, ding on our return on cost, and especially where you've asked us to reduce units, which I wanna go back and address later, but where you've asked us to reduce units, which has hurt our, our return on cost and increased how we amortize our expenses, I, I would respectfully submit that this isn't necessary. What I would like to say to you, if you're looking for, if you're truly looking for something that maximizes on duplication of life safety, something that we would consider is giving you a full boulevard from our main entrance, and we think that that actually would provide the duplication that you're looking for, it's what your planning board asked for in one of their original letters, I think your, your town planner also asked for that, and I think that's a far more elegant solution than trying to, trying to do what you've asked us to look at here. We, we appreciate the ask, we think it's sincere, and we know that you're trying to do the right thing by the town, and as are we, and Daniel and I started talking about it today, I said, well, if you're really, you wanna try and achieve what you're, what you're asking for, we think the boulevard would be a nice approach. The boulevard is expensive, but candidly, if we're already gonna make those disturbances, we think that's the way to go.
Thank you. Could you sort of explain the, the layout of a boulevard?
Boulevard would basically be two separate lanes, one in, one out, that are, that are near.
Have breaks.
Pardon me?
Probably will have breaks and be.
Well, there'd be, for most of its length, it would not have breaks, except where we have the wetland crossings, where you might see it come narrowed in a little bit, but Dan and I were talking about what the design particulars would be for that, and we think it would be, it's not gonna be inexpensive, but it could be done with reasonable sensitivity to the site and accomplish the type of duplication you're looking for.
Okay.
Can you have a sketch on that within a reasonable period of time?
I'm not sure we can give you the shred of twenty-four hours like we did.
No, 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 no.
Impossible.
You did a lot.
Impossible we can do right away, the miracle takes a little longer.
What I was thinking in that regard, too, it sort of segues to my recommendation to the board, is that, that ultimately, tonight, we've been over a lot, and we're gonna go over some more, and so I can begin to put together a decision that's now consistent with the, the concepts you've talked about, but I wouldn't want you to take a final vote tonight and wait till that decision is ready.
Right.
We've reviewed it, so maybe, I, even a couple of weeks out to give me time to work on this, in the interim, they could provide perhaps a design of this boulevard that you can take a look at and see if that does not work as an alternative.
Well, what, I, I think what I'd, I'd like to see, if nobody has any more comments on this aspect.
I have a couple, just, just so they don't get left behind. If the boulevard is going to be feasible, then I think the median in condition number four probably is.
It may go by the boards.
Right.
It may be moved, yeah.
It's under the boulevard.
Right.
And secondly, if you're sticking with a lesser number than three hundred dwelling units, we would, in, in condition number one, where it mentions three hundred dwelling units.
Change all that.
No, I'm thinking about the parking spaces, if you would've just simply had a sentence that says two per, two per unit.
Per unit, that's right.
That'd be good, then we don't have to give you six hundred parking spaces, two hundred and fifty units, if we decide to accept that.
Okay.
Again, that's, whether you accept it or not, the decision that will come out, you know, even if you don't like it, so to speak, will have that, those kind of changes, that's what I need time to look at, those kind of changes, to make sure that they're all in there.
So, so saying that, you know, we've covered probably ninety-nine point five percent of the, of the, the conditions aspect, or ninety-nine percent of the condition aspect, I think we need, we're probably gonna need a continuance for a couple of weeks.
I'd like to see.
If it's okay with the applicant, so that we can actually get it prepared.
We don't even need their okay anymore, 'cause we go under a forty-day deadline right now from May thirtieth, so, but if we do, I'm looking at randomly, not, not July fourth, I guess nobody wants to meet, except me on July fourth, but I'd do it, but maybe the fifth, if this, if that works, I can then try to have everything ready, and then you can make your final, final decision, and, and if there are any modifications.
Yeah, I think, I think that we should be able to, to run their, the final decision, July fifth.
That's what I have in mind, yeah.
What day is that?
Thursday.
Thursday.
I'll be phoning it, but.
That's all right, we can, we have.
Well, is anybody on vacation?
That's right, that's a good.
You're on vacation? 'Cause the main board members need to be here.
Yeah, those.
So if someone's taking a vacation, we need to know now. Johnny, you're on?
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yep, I'm gonna be here.
All right, so that's July fifth, we'll do it at six o'clock?
Well, I think we start at six o'clock.
Just in case we need the seven, 'cause we have to go upstairs and open and close that.
Right.
All right, so with that, I'll take a motion to continue this hearing until July fifth at six PM.
I make a motion that we continue.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, so, in support of the boulevard design, that I'm gonna come up with a sketch.
Some sort of sketch that shows it, yeah.
You know, it's not a, you know, boulevards don't get built all the time, so there's not a lot of regulations or standards associated with boulevards, I did look earlier in this process with the, the idea of a boulevard came up, the Devon's Enterprise conditions for Devon's does have a, you know, some, some recommendations.
Guideline?
And, and so it would provide for theirs allow, actually, as, as narrow as thirteen feet up to eighteen feet for each side of travel, and then with a median in between, I think probably sixteen feet would be reasonable, so a sixteen-foot-wide lane, a five-foot median, and then a sixteen-foot-wide lane, is that something that, that the board's looking at?
That's what Larry wanted, right?
Right now, we have a thirty-foot curb-to-curb dimension, that would make it thirty-seven feet, we may wanna neck down a little bit at the, at the wetland crossing, but.
Right, right.
Yeah, because you had told me earlier in an earlier meeting, when I inquired about the median, that we couldn't widen the road because of wetlands.
Well, it, it makes you go above the five thousand square foot threshold.
You can only replicate up to five thousand.
You know, because we're right underneath it now, so we'll have to look at some creative ways to bridge the wetlands so that the impacts are determined to be under that five thousand square feet, because the total square footage of, of actual, so let's say shading impacts are gonna be well above the five thousand now, but we're trying to, we'll, we'll try to limit it at the wetlands as much as possible, and in particular, the second crossing up by, up by the building.
Up by the building.
It's, it's a really narrow crossing, but then widens out significantly, so maybe, maybe we, we, we're, we're back down to a standard thirty-foot road by that.
Yeah, and again, we talked about maybe some of those breaks, and maybe we can coordinate that where it works for both, you know, to get there to that final, for that final meeting.
So we can do, we can do a plan view and sort of a cross-section.
Yeah, that would help, that would help, and then, if you can, and I don't know what Jerry's input in, I'd like to see as much on the plan as we can get on the plan.
So you want things like beacon and.
If you can.
If you can get those onto the final record plan, yeah.
Without going crazy on it, just because this is gonna be the recording aspect of it. Of course, unless you're gonna appeal it, then.
Well, neither so.
Okay, so, motion, we have a motion by Charlie to continue to the fifth at six PM, I have a second by John, all in favor, opposed, bachelor and admis, we will be going upstairs for the Stone Ridge.
One minute.
Hearing for the one minute, they have a continuance, okay? Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.